Good evening, and welcome to the Village Board Meeting, December 17, 2012. This is a voting meeting. And if I could have the roll call, please.
Mayor Ron is absent tonight. Mayor Protem Fleming.
Here.
The clerk is here. Trustee Emory.
Here.
Trustee Klebanow.
Here.
Trustee Nero.
Here.
Trustee Scott.
Here.
Trustee Seneca.
Here.
Danny Gerserl.
Here.
Attorney Zemanek.
Here.
Finance Director Parker.
Here.
Police Chief Mulhern.
Here.
Fire Chief Wise.
Here.
Acting Community Development Director Malik.
Here.
And Library Director Kuhn.
Please rise and join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Reports, I'm sure that if the mayor was here this evening, that he would be wishing everyone a very, very Merry Christmas, and he is sorely missed, but I'd like to pass those along. The other thing that I would like to ask tonight is if we could just have a moment of silence. I know there was a candlelight vigil last evening, but if we could just have a moment of silence for the Sandy Hook children and adults. Thank you very much. Madam Clerk?
I just wanted to thank Sergeant Sluger and his wife, Michelle, for organizing that candlelight vigil in, you know, for the victims of Newtown, Connecticut. That was very, they acted fast and they did a nice job for the community, and it was well-attended, and it's just nice that they put it together that quickly. And then I want to remind everybody that we're still having the winter coat drive, sponsored by the Village of Westmont employees, and it will, has been extended through January. So if you have any coats you aren't using, if you just bring in some clean coats, they need hats, scarves, mittens, all that kind of thing, so, for children, adults, everyone. So if you have them lurking in your closet and need to get rid of them, there's a place they can go. And petition filing for the spring consolidation election started this morning and will continue until 5:00 PM on December 26th, so that's just a reminder to everybody to get their petitions in. And then the ending is just, I wish everyone a happy holiday season and a very Happy New Year. That's all.
Thank you. Village Attorney?
I've got nothing to report tonight, thank you.
Village Manager?
Thank you, I'd just like to also wish everybody a happy holiday season and Happy New Year. And I wanted to clarify, Trustee Klebanow asked kind of, I guess, a question on Thursday about the calendar versus what was reported in the paper regarding the fire department blood drive, and that will be different than what the calendar says. It is actually on Wednesday, the 19th, not Thursday, the 20th, as it's reported in the calendar. And there's a press release on our website that has the correct information, and it was reported correctly in the newspaper.
Thank you.
Okay. Are there any items to be removed from the consent agenda this evening? Bearing none, I'll take a motion on the consent agenda?
Motion to approve, Emory.
Second, Scott.
Call, please.
Trustee Emory.
Yes.
Trustee Klebanow.
Yes.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Fleming.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Trustee Seneca. Yes.
Okay. Okay, moving on to unfinished business. 2012 property tax levy. Board to take the following actions: Conduct a public hearing on December 17, 2012 regarding the property tax levy. Number two, adopt the 2012 tax levy ordinance in the amount of $8,57,089 and no cents.
Motion to approve Part I, Emory.
Second, Seneca.
Thank you. So to start off the public hearing, I just wanted to give a brief overview of what's before the board and what's before the public for consideration at the public hearing. A lot of this is repeat for some of the board members, but as we've discussed this at several meetings, but I wanted to kind of go over it again for the benefit of the public, especially those public that are here to participate. So to repeat what was already said, we've, the current levy that's before you this evening is for a levy of the $8,57,089, and that does represent about a 6.8% increase over the prior year's tax dollars. As the board's aware, initially, the board had proposed a levy amount that was a little bit less. That was back when the board was home rule, when the village was home rule, and the board had proposed a smaller amount. Typically, as a home rule community, the village board has indicated their interest in making sure that we were under the property tax cap, which sets a limit on how much property taxes can increase. As a home rule community, the village was not subject to that property tax cap, and because of that, they could levy whatever they chose to. The village board conscientiously wanted to make sure that we were under the property tax cap, and so, at the time we did the initial proposal, we looked at what the lowest possible amount that we thought the property tax cap may allow, and then attempted to levy a little bit less than that. And that's what the village has done, and that's typically what's done in non-home rule commun, excuse me, in home rule communities, that is commonly done, because home rule communities have the flexibility to use other revenue sources, because home rule communities have the flexibility to be able to address needs as they arise in future years. Since the time of that original proposal, due to the referendum, the village has lost the home rule status, and as a result of that, they've, the proposal before you tonight is to revert to the prior practice that the village had when we, before we gained home rule status, when we were subject to the tax cap. And got up here a graph that sort of illustrates previous to the tax cap, and you can see, the green line is the dollar amount that the village levied, which is higher than the tax cap, and the red amount is the actual amount that was extended. As you'll notice, the red amount is lower than the green amount, because what happens with the tax cap is that the county looks at the tax cap and only gives the municipality the amount that they're authorized to have under the tax cap. Because of that, the typical strategy has been to levy, sort of estimate high for the tax cap, and then levy an additional amount. Once that is done, the county then reduces it to the amount allowed under the tax cap. So the village will still not receive any more than would be allowed under the tax cap, but this method allows the village to capture all the revenue that they would be allowed under the tax cap. And it's been discussed previous times, but I want to reiterate that it appears to be our, our estimate is that the difference that a resident will see for this proposal versus the prior proposal is somewhere between $20 and $40 for an average resident on a yearly basis. Any questions from the board before we speak?
Okay. Then in that case, is there anyone within the public that would like to speak upon this? Come on up to the podium, sir. If you state your name and address, sir.
Nicholas Grassi, 129 Ashford Lane, Westmont. I've been here 25 years. When I first moved here, the taxes were lower than any other town around here. Last year, my taxes went up $500, and I know everybody's going to say the schools, which have, seem to have, have no sense about other people's money. I know you're laughing, but you know it's a serious thing. This recession is really a depression. You can't sell your house, and if you do, you got to give it away. Taxes go up, but the reason I came is because my taxes went up, I want to know when is enough. I own a business myself, small business, I cut hair for a living. I raised my prices four years ago. If I raise my prices, they go somewhere else, because you got all this cut rate places that have opened up in the last five years. I can't do nothing about my taxes. Every time you take a dime away from the citizens, that's less money they have to go spend on, to spend on things they want. Sales tax would help the village, or fix their house up, things like that. You know, the whole state is this way. We live in the worst state in the United States. I was born in this state, and I can't believe it. People are leaving this state to go to Wisconsin. He found a way to cut expenses. Pension plans? I have no pension. I'm paying for everybody else's pension, and they retire at 55 years old. I'm still working. I choose to work because I'd have to live on Social Security, and with the savings, my annuities, which don't give me no 3% cost of living. This whole thing's got to come to an end. The idea of police and fire getting all this money, and the teachers, and you know what, retiring 55, believe me, they could work to 70, like everybody else is doing. We're in trouble in America. What's going on in Washington is just the beginning. Our money's worthless, they're printing money like crazy, and now we come up with more taxes. Now, there's ways to cut spending. One, someone retires, he doesn't get hired. Now, I know the home rule, which I didn't vote against, I had no idea the home rule, but obviously, by looking at this audience, nobody gives a darn, because otherwise, this room would be packed with 1,000 people. I have no idea what's wrong with the people who live in Illinois, if they're brain-dead or whatever with them, but they like paying money out. I wish you'd vote no, but you probably already made your mind up. But I'm just telling you, I had to get it off my chest, because I can't believe taxes are going up and up, up. My house is worth less money. Now, I improved it this year. I spent $3,000 putting a nice driveway in to make it look nicer, okay? To make it look nice. You know what? I'm not going to put a dime back in the place. I'm tired of having, having to work and work and seeing my money taken away. Last year was enough, $500. When I first came to this town, we picked up garbage twice a week. Twice a week. We didn't have all those rich dealerships. Now, if you want to raise taxes, raise it on cigarettes, booze, food, where people, not raise it on property tax, because you know what? You've got a lot of seniors in this town, a lot of seniors, and they can't afford it. And they can't afford to keep their house up. So what you have is you've got people who don't put any money in their house, because they don't have it, and it looks like the ghetto. That's what I had to tell you. I mean, really, have you, any of you ever think what's going on in this country? What, how run away, they're printing money like it's water? You don't think this is going to come to an end? We're going to look like Greece is, where you've got 30% unemployment.
Okay, sir, if you could please wind up your cap.
You know, I just had to tell you, I wish you'd vote no, okay?
I understand.
Thank you. I get on a podium, I forget the time.
That's okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it. I'm sure your sentiments are felt by many, many people that do care. Trust me, your sentiments are felt by many, many people that do care, and I am one of those people that are fed up with a lot of it too.
I would expect more people to be here.
I understand that. That's unfortunate that they're not.
Can I make a quick comment while?
Certainly.
Not, certainly not unsympathetic.
Sure.
Unsympathetic at all to the sentiments that the gentleman expressed. Just to point out, you know, factually, the village's rate has actually dropped, you know, in the ranking in terms of municipalities in the county where we dropped from last year from 20th to 22nd. So we're not the highest in the county by any stretch of the imagination, we're in the bottom half in terms of our rate. So I just, for information purposes, wanted to make that comment.
Ron, out of every resident tax bill, do we get about nine, 10 cents out of every dollar, and the rest goes to the other taxing entities?
Is it nine?
It's...
It's 11.
It's 11 cents, so.
11 cents of every proper tax dollar.
So only 11 cents out of every dollar that we pay, so the lion's share of our taxes are indeed for other things.
The gentleman understands.
Absolutely.
A lot of it goes to school district.
Yes. Thank you for coming in.
Well, I know it's hard, things are bad, believe me, but I just, someone's got to put an end to it. I mean, we can't have taxes going up, 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 and people's wages, you've got the average wage at $12, $12 an hour, people.
Okay. Thank you, sir. I appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you. Any other comments from the board?
Got one in the back.
You've got another one. You've got some more in the back.
Come on up, please.
I'm back again. Grace Snyder Kubica. I live at 61st and Fairview, and I am a property owner. And I know there's a lot of games played with the taxes, and how you estimate them, and send them in, and propose them, and all this other stuff, but how about, as the gentleman said, how about thinking about the little guy? This is just, this is a recession. Everybody's hurting, and you're proposing higher taxes, everybody wants more, more of our blood. I'm disappointed that you would even put in a proposed tax hike. You got one last year. I'm glad you don't have a blank check this year, and you will be at the tax cap, but that'll be tough enough. I'd like to see a little more kindness going on. Start thinking about the residents, because you will lose them. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public?
Is this just on this issue?
Just on this issue, yes, ma'am. Any other comments? At this point, then I will close the open hearing part of the tax levy. Then I will accept a motion on point number two. We don't have to vote on number one.
So moved.
Correct.
So moved, Seneca. Second, Emory.
Questions or comments at this point?
Well, I would have liked to use the taxing powers of home rule, but that, we don't have that anymore, so we have to do what we have to do.
Can I actually turn it on? It's very hard to do, they can be so kind.
Oh, that's in the back.
Someone check in the booth and see if they can turn them up?
Christine, are you able to hear us okay?
It's very loud.
Okay.
Okay.
He'll get it up, thank you.
All right.
Okay. Are they turned up now?
Is that better?
Yes.
My comment was, we would have liked to rule, to use our home rule taxing power so that non-residents could share the burden, but without that, we have to do what we have to do, so as not to interfere with police services, ambulance services, fire services, and the like.
Well put.
That's right.
We all live here too. It's the last thing we wanted to do. I mean, I am one of the little guys, and the last thing I want to do is spend more money than I'm making on my own job, and it's, but I also want my home value to go up, and I want the services to remain the same, and it's such a small increase, and I don't even want to call it an increase, but it's very minimal. I mean, my taxes went up a lot last year as well, just like yours, sir, and, you know, a very small portion was from the village, so.
I have to, I have to concur, whether it's $10, whether it's $1, whatever, it doesn't matter.
Right.
It doesn't matter. It's an increase. The unfortunate thing in our particular situation in this village is that we have to do this in order to maintain the services, the basic services that our residents have come to know. I mean, it's, I mean, our options are very, very few. If the residents would be willing to live with a little bit less police protection, a little bit less fire protection, and ambulance protection, I'm, you know, but I mean, and it's not, it's not meant in a cruel fashion, I want you to understand that. It's the facts. It's the facts of the time. As the gentleman spoke to, the country has gotten out of control. Things have gotten way out of hand. The unfortunate thing is, a lot of times, once it's gotten out the barn doors, it's not coming back, and it's unfortunate.
I would suggest to any of the residents that aren't happy is that they go attend the other taxing body board meetings too.
Yes, very much so.
Since that's where the majority of it comes from.
I believe Marker just levied considerably higher.
They levied a 13.9% increase in the Marker District.
Yes.
That's our district. That's your district.
That's our district. That's your district.
You're in Ashford, that's, you're in Marker 60.
Marker, Marker School District just levied a 13.9% increase in their levy.
You see, that's what, that's what's been said.
Sir, the public hearing's over.
Oh, okay. Fine.
I'm sorry, but I can't.
I, I, I did what the Constitution said.
Yes, I understand.
Long live the Constitution.
Understand. But those are, those are some of the things too. I mean, it's, you know, it's more than just village government that people need to get involved in. They need to get involved in the school districts, they need to get involved in the park districts. They need to get involved in all of these taxing bodies.
Yeah, they think we're the only ones sitting here.
Right.
And taxing ourselves into oblivion, because we all get the same tax bill.
It's not like we get in our car and drive to Downers Grove to rest our head on our pillow.
Yeah, I mean, you know, when you look at your tax bill and you see the amounts of money, go to those board meetings and tell them, and nobody shows up but them at the school board unless it's parents with parent, you know, teacher-parent-child issues. And it's like, I don't get it, but Mr. Grassi is right. Apparently, nobody here, nobody shows up here either, so, what do you say?
I have a question, Spencer. When we, when we levy this, it's because, once it's done, we can never ask for more, correct? So we have no choice but to go for the max, and then hopefully, we don't need it. Is that...
We won't get it.
Yes.
We won't, we won't get it.
I don't.
We won't get it, so.
We have no choice but to ask for the max.
That's correct. We can't go back and ask for any more at this point, so if you want to get everything you're allowed under the tax cap, you have to ask for what you assume to be more than the tax cap.
Because we're going to get less anyway.
Yes, we will get less than what we asked for, yeah.
But the goal is to get the maximum allowable.
I just want to make sure that people understand that it's not, we're actually, actually not going to see this, we're going to see probably something less.
Right.
That's correct.
Definitely less, it won't be.
Yep.
I just want to make sure they understand.
And we don't make up the rules.
And what makes this difficult is, this is all being done before we've even worked on the budget. So you're, you're actually projecting way ahead, which is very difficult in your state to figure out, you know, what we're going to need, and we have no choice now, so, I appreciate it, then. Thank you.
Thank you.
We really, we really don't give many choices anymore. We now allow the state of Illinois and Springfield to run us, so.
Yeah, they'll be running the show.
So that's, that's something to think about, because we don't have that latitude anymore that we had, so, now we'll, we'll have to see what Springfield decides to say and what they're going to do on their next moves. Who only knows? Any other comments? Roll call, please.
Trustee Seneca.
Yes.
Trustee Klebanow.
Yes.
Trustee Fleming.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Emory.
Yes.
You got me, Jenny.
I'm sorry.
Yes.
I wrote down.
She knew how you were going to vote. Telepathically.
We just, she already knew, she already checked it off, you know?
I wrote it down instead of leaves, I'm sorry.
You've been too quiet tonight, Bob.
I'm tired.
Yes, a fun night in Westmont, that's why.
Okay, next. Establishment of a public hearing date for the Southwestmont Business Development TIF. Board to consider an ordinance to set the date, time, and place for a public hearing pertaining to the Southwestmont Business District Tax Increment Financing District. Motion, please.
Motion approved, Nero.
Second, Scott.
On the question, any questions?
I actually do have a question. Are we going to be able to go ahead with one this time, despite a certain person's disruption to the last one?
With the public hearing, or with the joint review board?
Well, that was the joint review board that he kiboshed.
So notice has been reissued for the joint review board. That's upcoming, and that's a precursor to the public hearing taking place on the TIF.
That's right, okay.
You mean, you mean a 13.9% increase group?
Yeah, that group.
Oh, okay. Okay. No more questions? Roll call, please.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Fleming.
Yes.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Klebanow.
Yes.
Trustee Emory.
Yes.
Trustee Seneca.
Yes.
Next. Draft Comprehensive Plan. Board to consider motion referring draft comprehensive plan to the Planning and Zoning Commission for the purpose of conducting a public hearing. Motion, please.
Motion to approve, Emory.
Second.
Just that it's January, it's supposed to be January 9th at 7:00 PM, right here.
Second, Scott.
Any more questions, comments? Roll call, please.
Trustee Emory.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Fleming.
Yes.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Klebanow.
Yes.
Trustee Seneca.
Yes.
New Business. 126 North Grant Street. Plaka Lock Coverage Variation. Board to consider an ordinance approving a zoning code variance request from Thomas Plaka to allow lock coverage greater than 35% maximum allowed.
So moved, Seneca.
Second, Scott.
Questions? Bearing none, roll call, please.
Trustee Seneca.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Fleming.
Yes.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Klebanow.
Yes.
Trustee Emory.
Yes.
Video Gaming Terminals. Board to revisit and consider an ordinance reversing a village board of trustees vote taken on October 19, 2009, where the village opted out of licensing and placement of video gaming terminals within the village of Westmont. Reversing the vote will allow video gaming terminals in Westmont. Motion, please.
Motion approved, Scott.
Second, Seneca.
Comments, questions?
Just to mention that the chief actually did a road trip to Gulliver's, and based on his report, it sounds as though it's going very, very well, that it was hard to even know that they had the terminals there. Machines are very quiet, no bells and whistles, seemed to have little impact, and certainly no negative impact when he was there, according to his report.
Real quickly, there is a lady here this evening that was not able to attend Thursday. Would it be okay with the board if we allowed her to speak?
Sure.
Would that be okay?
Absolutely.
Mrs. Gilroy, please come up. Hit your name and address, please, and remember, you have three minutes.
Kathy Gilroy, 230 West Division Street, Philip Park. Good evening. No one has paid me to be here, nor would I profit, as most speakers for video gambling would, if you allow neighborhood slots. Those who would profit from your residents' pain will not tell you the ABCs of convenience gambling: addictions, bankruptcies, crime, corruption, child abuse, divorces, embezzlements, homelessness, poverty, and suicides. I have found that most towns don't care about those issues. So let's talk money. To generate $100,000 a year in taxes for Westmont, local families would need to lose $2 million per year. Of that $2 million, $700,000 per year would go to your casino owners. Yes, the industry calls bars with slots casinos. $700,000 per year would go to route operators, and $500,000 per year would go to the state. Westmont would relinquish all control to the Illinois Legislature, which in their desperate Legislature, which, in their desperate attempts to raise revenue, could increase the number of slots allowed from the current five to 10 or more. The Legislature could raise the tax on families' losses from the current 30% to 50% or more. Cook County has already added a tax on gambling machines. The state did raise taxes on casinos after they opened, and, less than a year after the 10th and last one opened, tried to double the number of casinos allowed. If the state allowed it, and easily could, your vote for slots could allow them in Westmont grocery stores and gas stations. According to Ed Paisel, Executive Director of the South Suburban Mayors and Managers Association, funding for the Capitol bill is still available, whether Westmont allows slots or not. Government officials in South Carolina and Montana commented in a GAO report, quote, "The atmosphere of convenience gambling created a negative environment and stigma in communities, which hurt local commerce and residential areas, and had a detrimental effect on community investment. They discourage new business from coming in," unquote. Gambling is not new business. Its addictiveness simply redirects what should have been sales for Westmont grocery stores, gas stations, furniture stores, thrift stores, even church collection baskets, mortgages, and rent. Who is this board representing? Those Westmont businesses and families, or just bar owners?
I'm going to have to ask you to wrap up, please.
Okay. Um, Westmont nonprofit organizations were once given a monopoly on gambling. They were hurt when casinos opened. Having casinos in Westmont would take their advantage away completely by favoring profits for casinos over success for nonprofits fundraising. According to several village attorneys, if one-armed bandits move into Westmont, they could be grandfathered in forever. Later, you could ban only new casinos, not existing ones. Why risk that? Wait to see if towns that have opted in become known as sin cities. For now, please continue to opt out, as towns and counties with 4.9 million residents already have. Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you for allowing me to speak.
You're welcome.
Um, if I could just ask, I don't want to put trustee Scott on the spot, but I'm going to.
Okay.
Um, you talked a little bit on Thursday about the lottery. Do you have those numbers with you, or do you remember them?
Right up here. Um, the dollars that are spent in Westmont last year, 2012, was $7.7 million. So, it's not, you know, chump change. And it's been here for a long, long time. The, uh, owners of the 23 terminals got a commission of $356,000 split between them, prorated depending on how much they sold. So, at that point there, and the, and the village got nothing. So, I would have to ask if your organization is against the lottery also?
Yes.
Of course.
And one, one vice doesn't...
No, no, I understand it. I understand it. Just...
Um, I have a, that just leads me to ask you, how many, number of people use the Westmont food pantry?
Oh, a lot. Not all from Westmont, from all of southeast DuPage.
Um, I said Thursday night I was going to do some more homework, because I had some more questions, and I've gotten past the whole moral issue. Um, but I talked to, um, a few people that, um, have different perceptions and different, what should I say, involvement in issues. A friend of mine who, uh, works at the U.S. Attorney's Office and deals, um, with organized crime, um, kind of chuckled and said to me, you know, Alan, you, every day, you only see the ones, the people who tried to roll somebody in the parking lot and gazed, got tased 12 times in order to get them under control. So, your reality on what these things can do is different than somebody else's reality, who says, you know, let's have a couple of friends and go out, um, and throw a couple bucks in there. He said, they're just different realities. Neither one is more valid than the other. They are different realities. Um, and he explained to me that the whole organized crime issue was much more of an issue, and especially, um, downstate, when there were, um, thousands of illegal terminals. And, you know, it was quite the opportunity to shake down, um, bar owners and tavern owners and such, when they're operating illegal, than when they're operating legal. So, he explained to me that that will, you know, one of the things is to, um, you know, curb that whole opportunity. Um, however, um, you know, where there's a will, there's a way sometimes. It's not totally gone. But it was interesting that when I talked to people as far as the, the background, um, the reason the state looked at this is because there was so much money being made illegally that the state wanted its cut. That pure and simple, it was like prohibition. The state wanted its cut of a huge business, and therefore, if it's illegal and everybody else is making money but the state, um, then they seek to legalize it. I think it's kind of goofy, because that's what parts of Nevada did with prostitution, but, you know, so be it in Springfield. Um, in all respect to trustee Nero, I understand your argument of who are we to tell how, tell people how they should spend their money. Um, in certain areas, we do. I mean, we have had no problem unanimously turning down massage parlors when the owners have criminal histories of prostitution. Um, we do tell people, we don't want you to, you to spend your money there. We've turned down, you know, we don't want strip clubs up and down cast, and we've turned down cigar stores and fish restaurants and all of that. So, I understand what you're saying. Just in this context, I don't agree with that reason. And I also called, um, Representative Patty Belloc's office and Senator Kirk Dillard's office, um, to talk about, because they're there for all of the floor commentary and all of the debate on the floor, some of which makes it into the committee notes, a lot of which doesn't. Um, and I didn't have time to get the transcripts of those. But my question was, why did the state limit this to five? If it's such a good thing, and it's going to bring in all of the business, why did the, is the law now that each establishment is only limited to five? And I was told that it was to appease all of the people who were against it, that five is such a miniscule number, that this appeases people who are against it, just like having only five casino licenses pending for the large casinos in the state appeases those who are against it, rather than saying, we're going to open it up to hundreds or perhaps thousands. Um, and then that leads us to, um, and it was spoken about, um, just a couple minutes ago, and moral issues aside and everything, I had decided, well, you know, it will bring revenue, it will definitely help our tavern owners. Until, um, I asked the question, how long is it until, um, that number of five becomes the number is unlimited? And it's up to the tavern owners to decide whether they want one, or five, or 300. And I kind of got some hemming and hawing, but it didn't appear that five was really something that was, anybody was planning on sticking on for very long. If the number becomes unlimited in Westmont, and we are now non-home rule, we have no control over it. None. And I may have wanted to vote yes, because five, and to help tavern owners, okay...
I'm sorry.
I can go with that. But if we don't have the ability to restrict anything and limit it to be more restrictive than the state, um, I'm against that. Just like I, I was like, I, I'm, I understand the public has spoken as to home rule, but that doesn't mean that I have to like it when it's extrapolated into something that we can't control.
I thought that home rule would not have any impact on anything, other than what we could charge for a license fee per machine.
No, we could limit the number of machines.
Or more restrictive.
Or more restrictive. We could limit the number of...
So, if we were home rule, we could say one machine?
That's right.
Okay.
Now, we can't, we can have no limit whatsoever in this. None.
Yeah. I, I think anything can change at any time. I mean...
Isn't there limitations, too, on square footage of a property? I mean, if you had unlimited, I mean, how many can they fit in X, Y, Z tavern? You can't put 30 machines in there.
Depends how much money they're making. I mean, that's, that's all stuff that's up in the air.
I think...
But if it goes unlimited, and it is up to the license holder, um, I'm not willing to go that way.
I think it's interesting that it's harder to get this gaming license than it is to get a state liquor license. The background check is more, um, complete. There's fingerprinting. It's, it's, you know, they really go into the backgrounds of these people. Um, I don't know of any business, anywhere, that wants their business to fail. We still have teeth in that, you know, if they screw up, you know, we're the one that issues the liquor license. And I, I'll say again, and I, and I agree with trustee Nero, I don't think it's our job to say, "You can't put $2 in that machine, because you didn't pay your water bill." And, and next month, it might be something else, and, and we're not going to have that happen. I don't see that as our job. Um, I think people have to be responsible for their own, you know, their own limitations, their own, you know, it's, it's like, you know, the person that might be an alcoholic, you know, that, you know, they know they don't go into the bars. You know, people have to take responsibility for their own lives. That's not our job. It's not our job. I, I really don't have a problem with it. Um, I think it will be fine. I, I want to make my vote based on the way things are today. I'll face that ugly dinosaur if it rears its head, and suddenly, it's 10 or more. Um, hopefully, by then, we'll be home rule again, and then we will have control, because we're not going to be non-home rule forever. That we know. That's a fact.
Can we ban it, John, at point, if it were to go from five to unlimited amount, could we vote again and ban it at that point?
I believe, and I'm checking now, that its existing, uh, taverns would be grandfathered.
Mm-hmm.
Because they're making...
Once you give it to them, they got it.
Once you give them, it's it. It's over.
But once we're home rule, we can limit the number of machines.
But I'm not saying, I'm not saying the moral issue with, uh, gamblers and I, I'm not saying...
No, I understand.
Um, I have absolutely zero confidence in Springfield. None. None. They don't have to bear the burden of anything. If Boss Madigan wants more, you know, funds in his state war chest, he just opens it up and the hell with everybody else. And I am frightened by the state being able to say unlimited anything. Other than that, I was going to go with the majority vote till I, till I had that conversation late this afternoon.
The state could also say, kids could drink at 17. They could change the drinking age.
Not the same thing.
The state could say, I'm, well, it is, similar.
It's not. It's not the same thing.
I mean, there's a lot of things they could do that could impact our day-to-day lives. I, I realize that, and I respect that, and I'm glad you did, did the homework and found that out. But I'd rather, for me, I'm going to vote the way it is today. I'll face that dinosaur when and if it comes, as a resident of this village. Um, again, you know, I, I know that there will come a day when we will be home rule again. That is going to happen. We know that's going to happen.
But that dinosaur's not on the table, either.
I don't see any limitation on home rule power in the Video Gaming Act. The only limitation is that non-home rule communities can't charge more than $25 per device for a local license.
But it still remains that we wouldn't have any control, then. If they opened it up to 10 or 20, they could keep adding more and more machines. Is there anything we could put in a liquor license that would restrict certain things that would protect it from happening?
Well, the, of course, the video gaming, the ability to have video gaming is tied to the liquor license. So, if there are violations of the liquor license, um...
Well, I mean, I don't mean violation. Can we put restrictions in the liquor license, saying, you know, maximum allowed games, or anything like that?
No, because then we're trumping...
Now that they tied the two together.
As a non-home rule municipality, then we would be trumping state authority, and we're bound to follow state law on this.
And except for one lady here, we appreciate you coming in, who does not live in town. No one's here.
No one is here, and no one was here on Friday against it.
Not one phone call, not one email?
I've gotten emails, and I have people stop me at the, on the train platform.
Oh, those people I wish they'd call.
And I also had, I also had somebody that I was talking to, um, on Friday, who's a resident and a member of the chamber, that's, we talked about the whole issue, and he said, like, Papa's or something, where you take your kids, he'll take his kids to Darian or Downers. And that's, I mean, that's fine, but I, I, like I say, that was not a factor. I, I discarded, um, the moral issues.
See, I, I struggled with this because of it, and I thought about it, because, as I said, my, my parents were alcoholics. But I don't blame the bars. I blame my parents. Um, things like that, you know, if you're an alcoholic, you got to stay away. If you're a gambler, you've got to stay away. You've got to start standing for your own responsibility. But what bothered me, and I thought I made a brief statement, you know, on Friday or Thursday, was because I thought we were losing control on what we could do. There was something said earlier, when this came before us, that, you know, if with the home rule, we could put some caveats on, to have some kind of, you know, you can, you can enforce stronger than the state, but you can't. You know, but without home rule, it, it really bothered me on what we're getting involved with here, and what control we have. And it sounds like we have zero control. We open it up, and the state comes walking in.
Even if there, you know, we issue local licenses, even if we find that there's a violation, or our police get involved and find out there's an illegal machine in there, or some illegal kickbacks, or something, you know, we might be able to pull our local license, revoke it. Um, but we can't order the tavern owners to remove the she, machines or stop gambling. We'd have to go up to the state and say, here's the violation.
Yeah.
Here's what happened. We revoked the, the local license. Please revoke their state license, and they may or may not.
John, I'm still not, just to go back to what Pat was saying, um, with the license, I'm not real clear. I thought I understood on Thursday. I may have misinterpreted what he said. I thought on Thursday, let's say hypothetically, um, we have an establishment, a restaurant, sports bar, that has the machine, and suddenly, uh, there's fights, hypothetically. Fights, and fights, and fights, and fights, and police calls, and police calls. Wouldn't that be reason enough to pull a license, or does it have to be a violation on underage drinker?
For the liquor?
For the liquor, for the liquor aspect.
Yes, it would have to be liquor-related.
So, it would have to be liquor-related?
Yes.
Okay.
They're two different license...
Okay, no, I understand that.
It would have to be gaming-related, and people fighting doesn't violate the game.
No, no.
Does the state restrict the amount of lottery systems in the village?
No.
I know there's 23. They allow as many as they want. If you have a retail outlet, you can get one.
And they don't come to us for it, do they?
What, no, no, they don't. They go right to the, and now they're going in anywhere. Um, but let's ask a question to the prospective owners of these machines, or renters, or whatever it's going to end up being. Could we ask them to voluntarily only put in five?
No matter what the law says?
No matter what the law says. Nope.
I wonder if we've got teeth with that.
I don't know. I'm just asking.
You can ask.
A goodwill, a goodwill test.
You can ask, but more, more machines, more profitable, and I don't blame them.
No, no, I understand it. I was just...
No, I, I understand what you're saying.
Mm-hmm. That'd be nice.
Just an idea.
It is, I just, I don't mind a few, like I said, a lot of things I was weighing on is, we're used to video things. The kids go to, what is it, Chuck E. Cheese and Pop Money, so they're not getting money back, they're getting coupons. I mean, people go to this Dave and Buster thing. I think they get, everybody's got these video things. They, don't they gamble even on the internet with poker or something? So, it's all over. So, that wasn't the bother for me. The bother is to think of losing the control, and the state getting greedy for more money, and allowing more and more machines, and suddenly, we're looking, not just like a, a bar with some entertainment, but we're looking more like a casino. And, you know, I, I just don't know. That, that kind of really bothered me the most.
John, square footage-wise, though, if they were going to add more machines, wouldn't that affect, because anytime they open up a bar, we say you have to have so many tables, and you have to have this, and couldn't we control it that way?
Right. Most of our taverns are actually restaurants first, and have to have, you know, they predominantly have to serve food with alcohol and accompaniment. So, they can't clear out all the tables and turn them into video gaming terminals.
Except they have the games in the tables.
But they do have to be segregated, right?
They have those.
According, according to the statute, it says that they have to be segregated. But then again, I have, I have to hearken. You're dealing with the state of Illinois.
You could change that.
They could go in there and change this whole thing, and turn it upside down, and shake everybody for every dime they can get. I mean, it's, it, it's one of those situations, and, and I will say this right now, to the individuals that are sitting in our audience this evening, I got no problem with it. None, because I know that it will be taken care of in a proper fashion. I know that. And I'm sure that, uh, the Potbelly, which is an institution in this town, I'm sure that Charlie would see to it that it's taken care of. I can't say the same thing about the Uptown, nor will I. And that's the honest truth. Um, I mean, for example, I mean, you have several other establishments, Papa Pissaro's. I'm sure that, I'm sure that that would...
Laura doesn't even want them.
You know?
I talked to her yesterday. She doesn't want them.
That's as of now. You don't know what somebody's thoughts going to be to this now. You can't, you can't...
And, and you're right. I, I definitely agree with that.
But it's, but it's also a case that we, we talk about things changing, and the things that we put upon people in this town, and our businesses. One of the biggest things that we did, that I think is also, I mean, you, you talk about people spending money and dealing with things, we made it mandatory that every commercial business and whatever in this town uses one alarm company. And there is no competitive bidding whatsoever. And there have been various scenarios that it comes in cheaper, but...
Do you mean like they're keeping quiet, that there's going to be one, uh, company running all of the compute, all of the video gaming will feed into one computer run by one company? It's going to be given a state bid. Hmm. Not that I'm a cynic or anything.
I, I, you know, I, I just, and again, you know, I'm, I'm speaking for myself. I feel a responsibility to Westmont to vote on today. I cannot make my vote on five what-ifs. I don't trust the state any more than the next guy. But I can't make my vote based on, what if they do this? What if they do that? They can do this. They hold, they'll go. I just can't do it. I don't feel I was elected to this position to be wishy-washy saying, well, what if this happens? What if that happens? What if this happens? That's me. That's just me. I'm looking at this as it is today. That's all I can do.
So you look at today and you don't look at the future at all of this town?
I look at the future. Absolutely, I look at the future.
That's what you just said, though.
But I don't look at the unknowns. I don't vote based on an unknown. And that's an unknown. How can you say no? It may never happen.
Didn't sound too speculative, but I should've recorded the conversation and then dealt with the.
I'm just, I'm just saying, and as I said, I'm speaking for myself. I, I can't vote based on what-ifs. There's a thousand what-ifs on every agenda item.
I guess I don't see many complaints about the lottery amount of stores that are out there. Nobody knew how many were out there. Nobody knew how much money was being spent. Because nobody cared.
But a lot of it is people aren't sitting constantly for hours, you know, getting tickets. They just go get their tickets and they just disappear. It's a one-minute deal. You get your thing, you disappear, you go.
And not everybody's sitting in a bar either playing lottery or playing the.
They might be better putting the lottery thing in their thing. They may even make more money. They may get a winner.
I guess that's a decision they could make.
They're sitting there scratching those tickets off. You know, we don't control the, we control ATMs, where we put ATM machines.
Well, I think, I think we beat this horse as much as we can beat it. And I don't think there's much more that can be said. Everybody has strong feelings about it, one way or another. And I think at this point in time that I think our conversation is pretty well done.
Feel sorry for the horse?
I feel very sorry for the horse. And I really do.
Well, we could open an OTB.
There you go.
And then save the horse.
That'd bring us a lot of revenue, wouldn't it?
It would.
Yes, it would. So, that being said, roll call, please.
Trustee Scott?
Yes.
Trustee Klebeneau?
No.
Trustee Emery?
No.
Trustee Seneca?
Yes.
Trustee Nero?
Yes.
Trustee Fleming?
He's pulling a Steve Fidesco.
I might have to say yes at this point.
Thank you, Trustee Fleming.
I just hope, I just hope that going forward, that anyone who sits on this board will keep their eyes open and make sure that this is monitored and watched. And especially Westmont Police Department.
Well said.
A lot is going to go upon you and your officers to see to it that this is properly done.
And if you don't come to South of 59th because you're on a on a sting.
I'll go get him myself.
You will rue the day. Bad karma.
So please, take care of it. Talk to your, talk to your fellow members in this town and express the concerns now as well as in the future. That's all we can ask.
Well, we know those two are very.
That's why I'm speaking to both of them right now.
You said you weren't worried about those two.
That's why I'm speaking to them, because they're both well-known. They're both well-known and I'm sure that they will take it forward. Okay. Next. False alarm billing amendment. Board to consider and ordinance amending section 58.
Wait a minute. Back up to do semi tractor.
Oh. Ooh.
Yeah.
This may take a little while, too.
Your face. Have that horse turn the other side. So we can beat him on the other side.
See if we can reverse that bad boy and take him the other direction. Okay, well, semi tractor and/or trailer parking restrictions. Board to consider and ordinance amending section 58-101, 78-302 relating to parking in the Village of Westmont with the following restrictions. One, prohibiting semi tractors and/or trailers from parking at any time along 61st Street from Cass Avenue to Williams. Two, raising the parking fine for this offense from $30 to $500. Three, violators to be subject to vehicle tow. And four, restrict tractor-trailers sitting idle time in this area to no more than five minutes.
I meant to read 10 minutes.
10 minutes?
10 minutes.
10 minutes.
Motion to approve, Emery.
Second, Seneca.
All at one or separate?
Yeah, it says and ordinance.
Okay.
But I have a question.
Need a second. Hold on, I need a second.
I've seconded.
Two seconds.
Violator subject to vehicle tow, does a dropped trailer count as a vehicle?
And/or trailers is what it says.
Because it says vehicles to be subject to vehicle tow. I just wanna make sure that it, because we say semi tractors and/or trailers, but we have a definition of vehicle in the municipal code. I know we do. And I don't want these guys doing this continual dropping of trailers and then them saying that's not a vehicle. It can't run on its own power or something.
Violators is to be subject to tow. No vehicle.
So.
And if it's trailer or semi and trailer.
You mean if the trailer's just sitting there and there's no cab?
Is it a vehicle?
Is that, are we gonna tow that?
It's got a license plate on it.
Good question, because the way this ordinance is drafted, it prohibits the parking of a semi tractor and/or trailer, a combination thereof, over one ton at any time along 61st Street and Cass Avenue. And then it goes to say that any vehicle over one ton parked illegally can be towed. But it doesn't specify that the vehicle and/or trailer. And I think that should be clarified.
Tractor and/or trailer.
Yeah. Because, trust me, that guy was like a nut out there with the guy, you know, with his $30 ticket for a dropped trailer.
Leave him out there all day.
So, question, so the question also comes into play. Okay, if you're gonna do this, are we just talking about 61st Street here? Or are we talking about? I thought we were talking about other areas as well.
No, we are. So we talked about parking.
Because, I mean, it's specifying here.
Yeah, it's doing.
It's specifying only along 61st Street from Cass Avenue to Williams.
Right, so we have, we have two or two sections of the ordinance that are being amended. The first is the offenses, which talks about parking a vehicle over one ton in or adjacent to a residential area is an offense for which you can be ticketed or towed. And then we amended the parking section to outright prohibit parking along 61st Street.
Okay. Now, then the next question I have is, when can we talk about the other portions? Maybe I need to ask the manager if we can get that to deal with.
Parking on the property?
Yeah. As far as parking trucks, because we've had some places in town that are starting to do it again.
And I'm seeing it in some of the mall parking lots, which, you know, are of course privately owned. But I have seen them on 63rd and Cass in that mall. I've seen tractor-trailers there.
Yeah, they're moving on there.
E2 or C, C1?
That's C1.
C1.
So, I mean, I have seen them around town. You know, I think it was Trustee Emery that pointed out it's a little different up in the Ty Warner area. That's industrial.
Yeah, because that's industrial and the semis are usually moving.
The nature of their business up there.
But it's still an idea. I'm sorry.
Well, the other question is, this $30, the parking fine for this offense, raising it from 30 to 500, the officer who came out the last time pulled it on his trusty computer that it was $30 per 24 hours. So is our parking fine $500 and we can only re-ticket him if he passes 24 hours?
Yes.
When do we get to tow him?
Keep him there and keep taking it.
Your discretion?
Can we allow the chief to talk?
Sure.
And can we waive the, can we waive the truck as long as we've got the scale?
As long as they're out there?
I'd send the scales out with them when they go down there if I were you.
That was one of the questions I was thinking, which we didn't discuss on Thursday. A time period. So our officers aren't there issuing the ticket and towing the trucks and it's only been parked there for three minutes? Is there, I would recommend some type of a time period before the vehicle's towed. I mean, whatever that would be, you know, do that for the board's decision.
Two hours.
Has to be parked there two hours. I, that's more than generous. I was gonna go close to an hour.
You know better. I agree.
I'd say an hour.
It's parked, and I believe in this location, and it's more that they're dropping, moving vehicles around. The vehicle may be parked there in violation. It gets hit with the fine, but it's not getting towed unless it's actually causing a hazard, causing an obstruction, which I think an hour would be fine. I was gonna ask for some type of guidance for our officers. I mean, because otherwise, if it's there for two minutes, they can tow it. But is that, I won't say, is that fair to the truck company as well? Or an hour, I think, would be fair.
I'm not looking for fairness here when they're dropping the stuff on the street right in front of a no parking sign.
I agree, but giving, giving us a little bit of a guideline as to two minutes compared to two hours, what exactly is.
Well, usually if they ticket them and then they go do their patrol of everything south of 59th Street, and then they come back, however long that may be, unless they get a call from me to come back because I've been known to do that.
I understand.
I think that's appropriate.
So are we at an hour then?
One hour.
If it's in excess of an hour, then it gets towed.
I think that's fair.
As far as the Trustee Emery's question on 24 hours, I believe it's an ordinance. We issue a citation for the same violation once with a 24-hour time period. I believe that's the same for all parking violations.
So we're gonna give them a ticket? And if the truck stays there over an hour, we're gonna come back and tow them?
Correct.
Gonna hook it. Say thank you very much and then, then it's gonna cost you the 500 plus whatever your fees are. It's gonna get real expensive real fast. Especially with that equipment.
When the officer issues a citation, that's, would start his clock. An hour later, he'd come back, the vehicle's there in excess of the hour, the vehicle's towed.
What would you say, what would you say the average cost of the tow of a vehicle like that is, chief?
For a truck, I know it's not gonna be cheap.
Would you like an idea how much?
I will yield to the authority.
Last going rate was about $750 to pull it because they have to drop the differential in order to, in order to haul it. And then it, once it gets into their hands, you're probably looking at another $1,000 to $1,500.
That'd be the other option, too, once the tow's in route.
What if he's delivering video game terminals?
It's gonna cost him a lot more to get it out of the hock.
Chief, do we have to notify the people down there because of the change?
Put up new signs or something?
I think it, as a courtesy, we could get ahold of the property owner and advise him, this is what's been enacted. Let all your vehicles, whatever, know.
Let them know.
I mean, it's been posted and it's on our agenda, but I would think that that would be. And again, we could hit all the businesses along 61st Street, not just the ones up, the one business park.
New parking restrictions do it to be posted by signs.
Yep.
I still would like to be able to, you know, that'd be another way to nip the problem as well.
So we will get new signs out there then with the new fine amount, I think, too?
Yeah, Steve can do that very quickly.
The fine amount, but you have to at least make it clear. Does it say no parking out there now?
Yeah.
There's no parking.
But in a day.
No parking the side of the street, no parking 6:00 PM to 6:00 AM. And then no parking.
This means you.
Maybe that's something we could get to the chamber, too, so they could let their members know if there happen to be any of the members that are businesses that deal with it.
And we can have the crime scene, not the crime scene, our community service officer.
It might be when we get done.
Any other option would be, too, is so we're clear, is if, once we call the tow, once the tow starts there, starts hooking up, the vehicle's gonna be towed. It's not gonna be, okay, I'll move it now. Once the tow is there and starts hooking, it's gone. It's not gonna be, if, if he comes out and moves it before the tow gets there, we're not gonna hold on that it sees the trucks, so it'll be towed. But once the tow truck gets there, it's gonna be.
Okay, I have, I have the other chiefs that would like to come forward and speak, too.
I yield to the, my partner.
Thanks, chief. As long as you're talking about this, I gotta bring something to your attention. Probably twice a year, we have training props that are one-ton or heavier semis that come and park in our South Park Atlanta headquarters for training purposes. Could be there for two to three days. Couple other examples that have happened during the year is we have fire service-related equipment salespeople that maybe two or three times a year will call and say, we're coming through the town to make a bunch of deliveries in the area. Can we park a truck in your parking lot overnight? And we have had some trucking companies that had no business, fire service, call us and say, hey, we're making a delivery, like furniture, like we got tables and chairs. Can we park? We can't be there by the time, you know, download for the next gate. Can we park in your parking lot? Do you want me to handle those as a case-by-case and let the police chief know? When we have those things.
Yeah, because we see you have that stuff. And the other thing was that this is done at the police discretion and they know when you're doing training or getting supplies that, you know.
But I would, I would, I would say, though, a private hauler, that's their responsibility on finding a way to see to it that they hit their particular target time. I mean, I can understand the other stuff or whatever, but a private hauler that's bringing furniture in, that's up to them. That onus falls upon them to find a place to put that vehicle and then see to hit their time the next day.
Okay, I'll throw this out there.
Oh, I love.
In that scenario, does that happen that often? I mean, does it happen where, you know, a furniture company or something? Okay, can we turn this into a little revenue stream and say, you can park there? It's gonna cost you 400 bucks.
Well, actually, the manufacturing district, I mean. Parking lots, parking terminals, truck terminals are allowed. Sometimes they're special use, sometimes not. Sometimes they're special use, sometimes not, but, you know, someone can open up a business for that if they get the proper zoning.
Hmm.
And if they don't have the proper zoning, then it's the village's job to enforce it, unless you say otherwise.
I'll figure.
So that I'm clear, because there's been times, as Chief twice has mentioned, this will be village-wide, not just for 61st Streets, if I understand it correctly?
It's amending the entire parking code.
Because there are times when trucks will call, "I have a delivery. I'm making a delivery in Westmont. Later today, I'm not pulling in their lot." We, in the past, for overnight parking, we gave them permission to park up and near around Ty Park up in the industrial.
Yeah, that's in the industrial part.
Yeah, correct.
Right.
It's not adjacent to residential.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, we're going to be reasonable, because there are situations where...
You asked for discretion. Last Thursday, you said, "Can the officers use discretion?" And then, yes, but not discretion to the extent of, "Well, maybe he'll come back and pick up this trailer on 61st Street in a couple days."
Yeah. You know, if North Carolina furniture is coming up once a week and needs to stay there for two days, that's a problem, you know, but from time to time.
But that hour period gives us a guideline and...
Yeah.
Good enough.
You're good.
Definitely.
Thank you.
Good, good, good.
Okay, the horse is getting tired here. Are we done with this one now?
Poor horse. Maybe.
Any more comments or questions? Roll call, please.
Trustee Emory.
Yes.
Trustee Clevino.
Yes.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Fleming.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
It's about time we clean up my street, yes.
Trustee Scott.
Maybe you should have abstained if it personally affects you.
Abstain.
Great idea.
At the least a present, a vote present.
Did you vote yes?
Oh, they called me yes.
Okay, next. Okay, now we can get into the false alarm billing amendment. Board to consider an ordinance amending section 58-29, false alarm billing, with the following requests. One, review and amend the definition of what constitutes a police false alarm as defined in section 58-29B from current definition. Review and amend the current fee schedule as outlined in section 58-29C, finds for police response to a false alarm.
Motion to approve, Emory.
Second, Scott. Questions? Hearing done. Roll call, please.
Trustee Emory.
Yes.
Trustee Clevino.
Yes.
Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Seneca.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Fleming.
Yes.
Oh, boy. Since one that we can't do anything about. Village Board Compensation. Board to consider an ordinance that will reduce compensation of the mayor, village board of trustees, and commission members, and not the clerk.
Yeah.
Motion, please.
So we just voted for this and just going to roll it out as is? And whenever it takes effect, it takes effect?
What are we voting on?
Well, if we wanted to be real creative here, attest the waters, so to speak, we could go ahead and vote it to go into place. And if someone wanted to challenge it, that would be up to them.
And it would have to be a board member in order to have standing to challenge it if we were to enact what some might consider to be an inappropriate ordinance, ending the compensation immediately? I would dare anyone to challenge that.
Well, the only thing I would say, then, would be, in all fairness to the commissions, is that they've had no knowledge of this. There's been no forewarning of them. Well, it wouldn't go into effect until after the election, anyway. No, but they're on there for their term.
Well, I'll tell you what, again, what the law says, and I think there was a little bit of confusion about when, according to the statute, this would take place. For those trustees that are in the midst of a term, the elimination of compensation by state statute would take effect in May 2015. For those who are elected coming up in this April selection, the statute prohibits changing compensation which takes effect during the term of elected office. So for those three trustees, they'd actually have to wait four years. And you also can't change-- you can't reduce the compensation of appointed officials, such as commissioners, during their term. Now, the commissioners are all on staggered terms. You know, you've got seven planning and zoning officers. I think they're staggered over the course of seven years. Each one comes up. So we'd have to figure that out. So the way the ordinance reads now as to the commissioners is their compensation will be eliminated upon the cessation of their current term. If you want to do something and make it effective...
That's like 2020, the last one.
Wait, when's the world ending again? What date is that?
2020.
Oh, that'll solve everything.
But they came into this knowing this. They have no say-so in it.
Yeah.
You're right.
They came in this and saying, "Okay, this is the deal that we've got. This is the deal that the village gave us." So, to all fairness to them, I could see living with that deal, letting them go until their terms expire and let them decide whether they want to stay or not at that point. And it's the fairest way to do it.
As the manager points out, we've got lots of commissioner members serving on expired terms.
Yeah, I kind of thought so.
Mm-hmm.
Woo! I would think just about all of them are.
And what's the difference between that and cutting out their salaries? Expired salary. Expired stipend. Well, I think the other thing is, is based on the reading of the statute, I understand what you can't change and what you-- when it can and can't take effect, but what prohibits any one of us from issuing in writing, so you can't come back and cry about it, a waiver of the stipend?
Absolutely nothing prohibits that. You can all do that.
That's our answer.
Can you prepare a little, two paragraph, perhaps three?
You could do it shorter than that.
A little one sentence? Waiver of stipend? Because I don't want to get and pay taxes on it and give the net back.
Then we donate it back.
Just give me the-- just don't give it.
I'd rather not have it at all.
Exactly.
I think that's good.
Because then it's...
Can we do that then with all the commissions and everybody?
Well, we would give them the option to do that.
Give them the option.
We wouldn't force them, not till their term's over with.
Right. We'd just publish a list. I'm kidding.
So you guys have to budget for it every year until it expires? And if anyone wants to execute a waiver, then the village will not issue payment?
That's good.
So the bottom line is, what we're voting on now is we're voting on 2014...
2015?
2016.
Through...
2017 and 2020.
No.
No 2020.
No 2020, so it'd be 20...
If somebody just got appointed to a commission.
2015 and 2017.
Correct.
Yeah, 2015, 2017.
We're going to need another horse.
Yeah. They already looked and said, "Not a chance." We already saw what happened to our buddy. No.
So, yeah, so as far as I'm concerned, I would like you to come up with the waiver.
So that's what we'd be voting on tonight.
That's good.
Yeah, that works.
And internally, we'll have to prepare a list of the commission members and when their terms expire, and present them with the waiver, and leave it up to them.
Or when their terms expire.
I think we should send them a letter, too.
Yeah, yeah.
A notification to all of them.
There you go.
For the ones whose terms have expired, it is an effect immediately?
If they choose to sign the waiver.
No, they wouldn't have a waiver. The commission wouldn't.
And then the mayor has the power, of course, to reappoint those commissioners. And they would have the option of accepting that reappointment, knowing there would be no compensation.
As it stands right now, they would continue to get their compensation, because that's where they are, but if once it changes them...